Good evening, everyone. I will call to order the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, Timnith Town Council Meeting. Ms. Peters Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
All right, everyone is present and accounted for. Uh, council, are there any requests to amend the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, uh, we will begin with a presentation of both the boys and girls, uh, Timnith Golf Teams. Let me first ask the boys team and Coach Woodruff to join me up here. There we go. All right, welcome. Uh, I am very excited first to introduce the Timnith Boys Golf, uh, Team. The, uh, boys team has won the district championship every single year they've played. So, uh, this is a back-to-back three-peat, back-to-back-to-back. Uh, and the team this year again placed first in the PSD District Championships, so we are very proud of them. I would, uh, first like to congratulate Coach Woodruff, uh, for, for leading these gentlemen. And, uh, we will go through everyone individually, but I wanted to speak specifically, Braylon Ball placed first as an individual. Braylon, congratulations. And Liam Holt placed third at the district championship. Liam, congratulations. Other members of the team this year are Mason Cardwell, Jake Dyson, Kingston Faust, Austin Hollensworth, Cannon McCollum, Wyatt Murray, Caleb Olson, Beckham Poulsen, and Reed Thomas. Oh, and also Greg Poulsen, who, uh, placed eighth as an individual. Congratulations, Gage. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Good job. Thanks for making Timnith proud.
Thank you.
And if I could invite council maybe to stand up behind us here, we can. Stay by your stool. You want to stand behind your sign?
Yeah.
Susan, can we see everyone? Does this work?
Great.
Well, down there. Thank you, congratulations.
Good job, guys.
And, um, mayor and councilmembers who brought you guys some of the Timnith Athletic.
Oh, my God.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome.
You bet.
Thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, I now like to invite up, uh, Coach Merrill and the girls team. All right, the girls team, uh, as a team are also district champions. Congratulations. Uh, what is really impressive here is, uh, each team is allowed to send five players to the district championship. And the Timnith players all ranked first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. Took the top five spots. Very impressive. Uh, Peyton Landon was the overall individual district champion. Isla Carlucci took second place. Tatum Carlucci, third place. Sienna Schrick, fourth place. And Carly Merrill, fifth place. Also on the team this year, Molly Nichols, Gianna Lorenzen, Lily McGill, Kayla Thomas, Julia Garretts, and Reagan Summers. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for making us proud. All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to public comment, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on items that don't otherwise, uh, have a space for comment on the agenda. Uh, I don't believe anyone has signed up this evening, uh, but I will ask if there's anyone present who did not sign up but would like to speak. Right, seeing no one, we will then move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of one item, which is approval of the May thirteenth Town Council meeting minutes. Uh, council, any requests to pull that item from the agenda? Very well. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very well, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Consent agenda passes. We will move on now to reports, uh, beginning with council.
Um, not unless you're gonna comment on the safety fair. Um, I had a opportunity to go. It's actually one of my favorite events, and there was quite a large turnout. Um, I know we had a lot of, um, staff members there at different booths. Um, I got to, from my house, actually see the helicopter land. Um, so always good turnout. I don't know what the actual numbers were, but, um, thank you to all the staff and volunteers who helped to make it a great event.
And then I'll just, uh, I'll add a little bit. We had, uh, council chats, uh, last week, I think on the fifteenth, um, over at Pedro's. Um, first of all, if you guys have never been to our, um, long-lost coffee shop over there in the corner, it's awesome. It's got really good food, uh, and really good coffee, great, great environment, but we had a good turnout. I think there was thirteen or fourteen folks that came. Um, a lot of good discussion on, you know, the future of, uh, the rec center, um, things going on in town. So, uh, always appreciate the town coming out for those events, and, uh, we'll keep doing them.
Yes, thank you, uh, to our events crew for making that happen. We have, um, Ice Cream Social coming up. Um, is that the seventh, June seventh, I believe? I was looking forward to that. And then, uh, the Timnith Parkway opened this week. I hope everyone's had a chance to, to drive that. Uh, very exciting. Uh, that's been a long time coming. Certainly the planning for that one, I think, predated all of us on, on council, but it's, it's great to see that, uh, come through to fruition. All right, any other updates? Then we will move on to, uh, staff reports, beginning with finance. Ms. Galliari. Mayor Pro Tem?
Questions? No, no questions this time. I got all my questions out of the finance committee meeting.
Good, good. Very well. Uh, we'll move on. Council, any other questions? Okay, uh, Public Works Director Stone.
Yeah, just to add what the mayor mentioned on Friday, we opened the Parkway. It's been a project that's been on the books for decades, planning and so forth. It's had a lot of people participate and make that happen, a lot of councils, a lot of staff, uh, even with the Development Landings Development helped participate in that. And, uh, just want to recognize all those over the decades that helped make that, uh, come to fruition. And I do also want to thank Kim, our project manager, to help it get through the fi- finish line. So appreciate all the help Kim did on that. So, that's all I have, unless you have any other questions on my report.
I had a question, Justin. I, um, was looking through some, um, some social media, and people were kind of talking about the Pulse project. And, uh, one of the questions that arose was, does Pulse make the other internet provider slower? Um, and so I just wanted to confirm in this project, by no way, no means, that Pulse is slowing down Xfinity or affecting any kind of other service providers, including maybe T-Mobile, like any other providers. This is simply just our project working through our lines, right?
Uh, I guess maybe just clarify as far as like slowed down, actually get, make their internet so it's slower, or that our project...
Even service outages.
Oh. Uh, no, not that I'm worried, but of course, that's over my head, but I don't see how that would be even, you know, feasible. So there are separate lines and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but definitely we could look into it, but I don't, uh, I guess maybe now that they have the faster speed, they realize maybe what they're missing? I don't know, so. But that's the first I've heard of it, and, um...
Yeah, I, I saw the same thing, and, um, one of the points made was that, um, I believe it's a T-Mobile tower that was out and has been out for some time, uh, and that was causing some service issues for some, for some folks. So that may have contributed to the perception.
Yeah, that could be.
Great, thanks for that question. Justin, let, let me ask, I know with the, the Parkway going now, um, we still have the, uh, railroad at Main Street crossing that needs to be done, and then we have some finished work at what is now the, the dead end, the south, uh, the south end of, of the Parkway. What are the timelines on those projects? Actually, I'll have maybe our project manager, Kim, come in and address those more definitive timelines.
So we are finishing up the Parkway very quickly. We're expecting, um, final completion and punchless items, um, later in June into July, just pending on weather and stuff like that. Um, Main Street Railroad, I'll have a further update for you later on in the presentation with a pretty detailed schedule, so.
Great, so the, uh, the end, the south end will be finished in June, is the plan?
Yes, the cul-de-sac.
Yep. Uh, anything else for Public Works? All right, Community Development Director Robinson. I do not have any additional updates, but if happy to answer any questions. No news is good news. Uh, Parks and Rec Director Kasal.
Um, yeah, so we had, held our first, uh, community, uh, meeting about the rec center, um, last Thursday. We had about thirty people in attendance, and so pretty good discussion, um, kind of went through the entire proposal and how we got to where we're at. And so, um, we still have two more. Uh, we have one on this coming Saturday from nine to ten, and then we have one on Thursday, June fifth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, so encouraging the public to come out. Um, we're sharing all the information with them, kind of the storyline of how we got to having a rec center even as, as a discussion point, and then kind of how we came up with the size and scope, and how we want to, uh, how we plan on trying to afford it. So, um, all the information is there for people who are wanting to know, so if anybody has any questions. In addition, we do have our website is up and, up and running. Uh, it's got FAQs on there, um, as well. Um, and then just to follow up, we had, we anticipated about seven fifty to a thousand attendance, attendees at the safety fair. Um, and then it's Friday, uh, June sixth is the, um, Ice Cream Social from six to eight at Timnith Community Park.
So I gave the wrong date. It's the eighth, not the seventh, right?
Sixth.
Sixth, not the seventh.
Correct.
Thank you.
I do have a, a question for Tom. Um, I know we've got some questions coming in, uh, with regard to, uh, potential financing. Um, and Lisa's done a great job of, of answering those. I'm wondering, um, if it's, um, not already covered, if some of those questions could be incorporated into your public Q and A and, and the responses? Just so, you know, other people are likely to have similar kind of questions.
If you can give, let me know specifically what those questions are.
Lisa can. She, she responded to them.
I know that Erin and I are planning on meeting with Slate and coming up with some additional information for you guys to have. Um, and then we'll also include those in the FAQs on the website.
Yeah, I just, I think it's, uh, would be good.
Yeah, so we, um, there's another mailer coming out this week that actually has the proposed, um, sales and use tax, what those new numbers would look like, um, so that'll be on there. It's a comparison to where we are with the, the neighboring communities.
Yeah, great, awesome.
All right. Did not make the agenda, but, uh, Chief Robbins, anything to share with council this evening? Hey, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Uh, and then finally, uh, our quarterly strategic plan update, uh, Town Manager Adams.
Thank you, mayor. I was gonna touch on just a couple of quick ones from there. Uh, I actually thought maybe tonight, one happy, exciting one, and one little more boring one. But, uh, first of all, we have, uh, noted in there the completion of Wildwing Park, so that's pretty exciting. I know a lot of residents already utilizing that space. But I also wanted to highlight one that, uh, might not be, um, quite as exciting, but certainly important. By state statute, we now have, uh, till just the end of this month, so we've been spending a lot of time, especially Jaden over there, uh, trying to bring into compliance our website with all things relative to the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. Uh, and that's a very time-intensive, uh, effort, a lot of which has happened in the first quarter. So kudos to Jaden for his hard work. We're well on our way to reaching that milestone. Just wanted to put that out there, uh, especially because as folks are using our website, they might notice some changes, and often those are coming to help us be in compliance with that.
Council, any questions about the strategic plan?
No questions. I'd just like to, I read through the, um, the update on the strategic plan, and, um, Aaron, I think, uh, you and the staff did a really good job on, on the update, uh, very clear and looks, uh, like a lot of progress and a lot more to come.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to say kudos.
Now, I want to also echo that. I, I really appreciate these updates, Aaron. It's great. One new update I saw in here, I think, was the, the fleet software. Can you just give a, maybe a brief update and kind of, uh, what your thoughts are on, uh, that program and where you hope to see it go?
Yeah, so, yeah, late last year, um, the Public Works Operations Supervisor, myself, went to Loveland, who we have a contract with to do some of the fleet. Uh, we looked at their software, um, kicked the tires, looked at it. But we're also investigating another software potentially that we may be able to use. It's a little bit cheaper, a little bit more user-friendly, um, especially for the size we are. So that's where we're at now, just looking at different software options, um, at this point.
And that's maintenance, everything, asset depreciation, like kind of looking whole, holistically at the fleet, right?
Yeah, exactly. I would be able to do all that. We'd look at, schedule your maintenance, make sure you're doing, keeping up on with it, especially whatever the manufacturer, um, calls for those different types of equipment. And then it would be, we would look at it integrating with the Loveland, um, software, because they still provide service for that. But, uh, definitely we made some good progress in that, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? And, uh, you know, Aaron, I'll, I'll just say, um, I, I really appreciate that we have a strategic plan, that we're able to kind of prioritize what we're doing. Folks, um, you know, I hear from folks all the time about, it'd be really cool if we could do this, it'd be really cool if we could do that. And, uh, these are a lot, lot of great ideas, uh, but we just sam- simply can't do everything and do everything well. Uh, and so I, I appreciate these updates, and, uh, you know, hopefully folks understand why we're prioritizing what, what we're prioritizing, and, uh, you know, keep, keep the good ideas coming in. I, I suppose, uh, the strategic plan is something that we periodically review every year. We, uh, we look at budgeting, and, uh, you know, priorities can change, but, but I think having a vision and, and, uh, sticking to it, um, is really what makes us most effective, so, so thank you for that.
I do have one more question and a and a comment. Uh, I also wonder, are are we posting the updates to the strategic plan, uh, progress quarter by quarter to our website?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Anything else before we move on to our regular agenda items? And speaking of strategy and planning, uh, first item is seven A, Resolution Thirty-nine, Series Twenty-twenty-five. Resoluting, a resolution adopting the parks, recreation, open space and trails post master plan. Director.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for uh, taking the time to uh, review the resolution adopting the parks and recreation, open space and trails master plan. Um, just to give you a little history. Um, this has been over a year long process of trying to get to where we're at today. So we started in December twenty twenty-three. Um, the Prost Master Plan was a part of a capital within the twenty twenty-four annual budget. In March of twenty twenty-four, after completion of a competitive bid process, Barry Dunn LLC was awarded the contract to conduct the Prost Master Plan. We did an extensive five-month public engagement process, um, which was carried out by Barry Dunn. And I couldn't be very, I was extremely happy with the amount of time and effort they put into really engaging our community from all aspects. Um, in June twenty twenty-four, um, after we received early indication through the public engagement process that a rec center was 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 a community desire, we went ahead and added a um, a rec center feasibility study as part of the project. So in March of twenty twenty-five, we presented this draft to you um, at a council workshop. Um, and then we uh, and now here we are today, asking for a final adoption. I really want to go over the community engagement piece because, like I said, we really did get out into the community and 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 tried to engage. So we had a multiple pop-up engagements at parks, businesses, we had a booth at the farmer's market, and then we also were at town events such as the Ice Cream Social and Fall Festival. At these events, we were handing out comment cards where we received over two hundred fifty-eight comment cards from the community. Overall, our engagement period was was over five months and it was in the summer of fall of twenty twenty-four. We also utilized our Year Timothée site. Um, we had some interaction on there where people could go in there and put an interactive map. They had an ideas wall. And then also a budget priority prioritization tool where they could, if I had a hundred bucks, where am I going to spend my money? Um, and so we also had uh, four focus groups, uh, four separate ones, one specifically about a rec center, one about programs and events. Uh, one about parks, trails, open space and the reservoir, and then we also just had a general open discussion. In addition, we had a statistic, I could never struggle with statistically valid survey. We needed about roughly two hundred fifty responses to be statistically valid, and we received over five hundred responses, five fifteen to be exact. We also involved the Prost Committee. Um, they had three presentations by the consultant Barry Dunn, one in October twenty twenty-four, one in February twenty twenty-five, and one in April of twenty twenty-five. And in addition, we did have the draft plan available uh, for comment on Year Timothée for a period of about two and a half to three weeks where we received five comments. So some of the key findings is there's a strong desire for community recreation center, a strong desire for hiking, biking and walking trails. We heard a lot for north-south connectivity throughout the community. We did find, we didn't know, which was not a secret, but our community park is uh, utilization is well above the national average. Uh, significant support for high-quality parks, recreation facilities, pools, open space and programs. And then also our top program is exercise classes, outdoor water-based activities and outdoor adventure activities. So I would picture seeing some some programming out at the reservoir, uh, if not the summer for next for sure. But with all this information, we came up with five strategic strategic initiatives within the plan, building a foundation of success. Grow services to meet community needs, align infrastructure with the growing committee, community, advance partnerships and steward natural resources. So one of the things that was unique about our plan is we didn't have that long history of data to go through and understand trends. And so we're creating the baseline now and and it was really good to go through this process to really get a good foothold of the of where we want to be and where we want to moving forward. So I uh, couldn't be happier with the output of the of this project and my recommendation is for town council to adopt the Prost Master Plan.
Any questions?
I don't have a question but a a comment. Um, I read the entire Prost Master Plan and I it's obvious that there's an awful lot of hard work that went in to creating this document, a lot of thought. And obviously, a lot of work by the Prost Committee and staff and advisory. Very, it's it's an impressive document and uh, yeah, I I I think the community should really appreciate this master plan.
Thank you. You have a question? Yeah.
Yeah. I wouldn't. Sorry, not necessarily a question. You know, more just again, a comment along with a a, I guess maybe a little bit of question. The numbers you 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 posted there responses, it seems like the town was as engaged as it can get. Obviously, I'm always shocked to see how little people come out, you know, whether it be on a vote, whether it be a survey. It seems like we have a lot of opinions and a lot of wants and needs and not too many, you know, too many where I think the number of two hundred or two fifty, you said it would have been adequate in a town that has eleven thousand people, uh, and we doubled that. So I think that's um, awesome uh, to to see that aspect of it. I would just encourage residents that are that are listening uh, to get even more engaged in the future because these won't stop, which I think is is the best part of this is the fact that um, we are listening and we want the town's input and we want to make sure that um, you know, if you have a voice that it is heard, which is which is loud and clear in the amount of time that was spent. And to Bill's point, the hard work that has gone in, I saw you guys at every single event constantly getting out there. So I just encourage people to continuously share their opinion, get involved in these surveys to to get the things that they want in this town.
Lisa, our our Prost rep?
I'm just echoing how much work went into this and how much time um, was spent reviewing it with the Prost Committee and all of the community feedback. I actually had one of the yard signs in in my yard for a little while there. But just appreciate all that, the hard work that that went into this. It's, like you said, it's been a almost a year and a half at this point. So thank you.
Tom, two two questions. First is um, respect to pickleball courts. Looks like we have one pickleball court for every nine hundred and sixteen residents. Is that right?
Correct. And the national average is one for every fourteen hundred residents. So we are we'll sleep, we'll keep working on it though, Phil.
I don't know if uh, if our Planning Commission Chair saw me drive by, but I saw him out there at Community Park yesterday playing. So I I can tell you they're getting good use. My other question is um, and this is the chart on, it's chart Q eleven, talking about facility needs. And it kind of ranks the the facilities from uh, most needed to least needed. And then on table six point three, it shows the facilities that we have related to um, the national median. And you you identified a couple of facilities that um, it looks like we're we're below that that national median. A diamond field, um, which which I think we all agree with. Would love to see that increase, uh, rectangular field. Um, I I know our sports programming is is using all the all the room we have and and still there's there's more demand. And then um, a skateboard park was identified as being below average, but but that's also what was identified is, you know, the facility that has the the lowest need by by the community. I was just curious, how how are we interpreting this in terms of you know, where do we put the priority there, the community need versus keeping up with the national average?
Well, I think we need to listen to our community first and foremost. And so with any of our new things that we come got moving forward, so whether it be um, Timothée Ranch, we will master plan that before we build it. So there will be additional engagement with that or even Wildwing Phase Two, there'll be additional engagement before we we do anything. Yes, we have the base master plan, but I think things change in three to five years. So during the during the design phase, I think it's important to have concepts and bring those to the community to decide what ultimately we do. We will use this as a guide, but you know, what's a priority maybe now may not be a priority in a couple of years. And you know, we also have to listen to our staff as far as programming needs. Um, and if we want to continue to do the the strategic planning that council sets forth, we're gonna need some additional field space. And so it's it's kind of a mix, but I'm a pretty big believer in, you know, engaging the community to tell us what they want. And so even if we have certain aspects at certain parks, I've already heard just by looking at the master plan that maybe not a a good fit. So you know, those are that that's kind of, I mean, yes, this is, it's good to see where we're at, where we rank, but our community may not need the same things that a lot of the other communities need. Like we have more pickleball courts, um, which is still, we're still getting used. And so even though we're better than the national average, you know, we have to listen to the needs and wants of our community. So just we have to be flexible. This is a good guideline, but but we got to stay nimble and flexible.
Great, thanks. I I I'm pleased to hear that. You know, I I think um, the the local need um, is more important than just keeping up with what everybody else is doing. So.
Yeah, because we mean, we hear the community every day about the programs that they want, but we just don't have the facilities to do that. So trying to include those in there and and explain the why, I think is 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 a good step, is what we like to do.
Yeah, and just just for clarity, you mentioned um, Timothée Ranch. I and the need for master planning that space. And I presume and uh, for the public, the references to the town-owned property north of Beth Key.
Correct.
At least in part.
Correct. That that was just an example?
Yep. No, I I just wanted to make sure people didn't get confused that it had to do with the the existing park in um, in Timothée Ranch, but it's the the other space that we that the town owns.
Yeah, it's the twenty-two acres that the community owns. It's adjacent to Beth Key that was being considered for the rec center at some point, at one point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. And is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the Prost Master Plan?
I move we adopt this resolution.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, I think the master plan, as I've already um, commented, is very thorough. Very professional, uh, involves lots of uh, feedback from the community. And I think it identifies the the wants and needs and now we just have to figure out how we pay for uh, everything that's that's high on the priority list and and more to come. So I'll be supporting it.
Councilmember Lake?
I just want to give a shout out to the Prost Committee members um, who took the time to review this. They asked questions, provided feedback, and I think this is kind of just a starting point for us here going forward.
So so I'm I'm definitely gonna be in support of this uh, master plan. I think if you look at what sets Timothée Park, excuse me, apart from other communities around us. It's our parks, it's our open spaces, it's our trails and our future trails as we plan this out. So I echo what other council members have said is that this is a lot of work. But this is really what pays dividends to our residents and all that hard work to the Prost Committee. Thank you, Lisa, for your time on this committee. So I will definitely support this and I look to this to help guide future councils as well.
I also will be supporting this. Um, I appreciate very much when we as a council are able to make decisions. You know, not simply based by what we think should happen, but but based on good data. And uh, the public participation uh, in this is fantastic. I I think we now have some really good data to work from. Really appreciate Barry Dunn and their assistance with this, as well as the rec center feasibility plan. And uh, and the coordination in in making those work together. So I shall support this. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving a resolution adopting the Prost Master Plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. It carries unanimously. We will now move on to item seven B, Resolution Number Forty, Series Twenty-twenty-five, a resolution approving the contract with GLH Construction LLC for the Main Street Railroad Crossing Project. Ms. Klevu Mimi?
Good evening, council. Quick overview of our project. Um, this has been in the works for quite some years. The project's scope is to upgrade the Main Street Railroad Crossing. There's two parts of it. Part of it is funded by CDOT. They had originally come in to put in entry gates on either sides to replace the stop sign. The town took the opportunity a few years ago to partner with them in order to add in the exit gates, make it a quiet zone and add in curb and gutter and sidewalks in order to make that happen. Uh, project goals for us were to improve safety for vehicles, pedestrians and cyclists by adding the missing sidewalks and curb and gutter. Um, and also allow the train to pass continuously from Main Street all the way through Summerfield as a quiet zone, which would be applied for at the end of the project following their timelines. Selection process, we went and did a request for bid on May fifth. The town received four qualified responses. GLH Construction was recommended as a low bid. They also met the um, fast project schedule. Initially, we were expecting the railroad to be anywhere from ninety to a hundred and twenty to further days out. And all of a sudden, they came back with fourteen. So we're happy they're out there. Um, but we're also trying to match their enthusiasm and pace now. The anticipated contractor award would be today if you guys recommend this contract for approval. Um, simultaneously, the railroad is out currently doing their construction on the crossing gate. So if you've seen the construction over by Timothée Beerworks on Main Street, that is what those are, is our railroad crossing gates going in. Following that, the panels will be placed, um, which should, and again, notice the asterisk, weather dependent, of course, everything I say is weather dependent, be finished up by June twelfth. Once those panels are in place, assuming our contract is approved and the and our contractor gets the right-of-entry agreement, um, we would able be able to start construction in June and it would take approximately two weeks to have that finished. Again, weather dependent. Financial impact, um, this was budgeted in the twenty twenty CFP budget. The Main Street Railroad Crossing upgrades had a total budget of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Incumbrances to date was a hundred and sixty-seven. That was for the Main Street Crossing Agreement with Great Western, as well as some design time. Uh, the GLH contract that we're proposing to award today was for eighty, approximately eighty-two thousand dollars, plus a ten percent contingency for a total contract award of about ninety thousand dollars. Advantages of this, um, approving the contract allows us to complete this longstanding project, which is an alignment and a priority in our transportation master plan. It also um, enhances our transportation goals to improve safety, improve traffic flow, and also provide that multimodal connectivity that we have been missing on Main Street. Disadvantages, if we don't do it, we do not get those things. Questions?
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we're gonna come in like maybe a hundred and seventy thousand dollars under budget on this project?
You are correct.
That's awesome.
So little humor to this. I've always been told there's three things that you get in a project. I think we we talked about this in one of the meetings before too, is good, fast and cheap. And somehow you guys got it good and cheap, really fast, all three of them at the same time, which is kind of unheard of. So kudos to you for doing that. Um, and I just want to point out that your bluntness and the disadvantages give me humor and get right to the point. And I appreciate those.
Can you remind me, uh, is there any obligations for the town for the CDOT grant? Is there anything on our end that we need to do?
It was separate. Um, in order to apply for the quiet zone, we need to build a. It was separate. In order to apply for the quiet zone, we need to build a curb and gutter and sidewalk if we want that quiet zone.
Okay, so.
We are not tied to their grant.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the contract with GLH Construction LLC for the Main Street Railroad Crossing Project?
So moved.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, I think, I think it's great. It's happening probably faster than we anticipated because of the speed of the railroad company. And I'm really impressed we managed to come in so far under budget, which is really awesome. So thank you. I'll definitely support this.
No, I'll, I'll echo the same. I think it's a, a project a long time coming as well. It'll be a huge improvement, especially meeting all the parameters of our transportation master plan. You know, the safety aspect of it and getting that all done in a, in a timely fashion under budget is, is, is awesome. So yeah, kudos.
I will also support this. I will disagree with council member Holt slightly, which is, before I moved to Timneth, I reached out to a friend of mine who lived in town. I said, I see there's that railroad that goes through town. You ever hear the train? And he, he told me, no, never heard it. And I, I moved in that first night. My daughter was a month old and, and not sleeping, of course. And I heard that train. And since that time, I, I thought to myself, we need to do whatever we can to get quiet zones through here. So Kim, thank you for, for realizing that, which to me feels like an eternity. You also note that, you know, this is one more investment that the town is making in Old Town. You know, just a month or so ago, we even made some lighting improvements down there. So I, you know, I think that's also worth noting, but I will support this. Any other commentary? All right, all those in favor of the resolution approving the contract with GLH Construction LLC for the Main Street Railroad Crossing Project signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. We will now move on to our final item of the evening. Item 7C, resolution 41, series 2025, resolution approving the engagement of Butler Snow LLP to render an objective legal opinion with respect to the 2025 election and proposed lease purchase agreement and related certificates of participation.
Thank you. So the question was asked about the financing for the proposed recreation center. And this agenda item relates to that. In order to do a public financing, it requires two attorneys, at least, maybe three attorneys if you count the lender's attorney. And so in addition to having general counsel, I'll issue an opinion on the town generally and that, you know, you properly approve the loan if we get there. But we are also required to have a separate independent opinion letter of a bond attorney that is properly certified to provide that opinion and they provide an opinion on the taxability of the debt and whether it was properly approved through, through Tabor. And so this, the town has been working with Butler Snow for quite a while. Primarily, I believe with Kim Crawford, and I've been working with Kim Crawford for 15 or 20 years on a number of different projects. And she's just a wonderful attorney that I work very well with. So we'll be working together to prepare for this financing. Also Dalton Kelly in her office will be working on this as well. So this is a standard engagement letter for them to provide help from beginning right at the election stage. And actually, they've already begun to provide some good advice in drafting proposed ballot questions, going back and forth with us on that, working with staff on how to identify the type of financing that would be most appropriate. And you'll see what's proposed here is a certificate of participation. Should the type of bond financing or debt financing change, it would just be an amendment to the contract to indicate the, the additional type of financing. But this proposal would include all of the assistance from the election up until the final financing. So they are, would be responsible for helping draft those election questions, the Tabor notices, answering questions related to limits on spending public funds related to the ballot measure. We'll follow up on that. Those limitations kick into place after you certify the ballot question. So we'll be providing more information to you on that one. And also then assisting with the actual financing, they will draft the resolution of approval, the financing, and some of the documents and review all of the financing documents, draft a whole bunch of ancillary documents that relate to the financing, and then ultimately give that financial opinion related to the bond. The cost of this proposal is $100,000 for their services that will come out of the financing itself as a closing cost. And but in the event that the town does not go forward with the financing, then the expenses are limited to $7,500 for their work associated with just the election piece of, of this. In terms of the deadlines that are coming up, the first one you're going to see is July deadline to let the county know that you're planning to participate in a November election. This does require voter approval for if it's going to be supported by a sales tax. And then the next step would be to have an agreement with the county in terms of operation of that election. And finally, to certify the ballot questions by beginning of September. And I reviewed the engagement letter and it looks fine. Any questions?
Jenkins?
Yeah, it says in your presentation estimated to be 100,000. Is there like a, a range or a, a maximum?
My understanding is that that would be a flat fee unless the type of the financing changes. And if it changes, either the amount of the bond and dramatically changes, if the type of financing changes, then there could be a modification in that and we come back to you if it were to a significant change.
So what we're approving is a not to exceed 100,000?
I believe it's actually that you're approving a flat fee, isn't that correct?
Fee of 100,000.
Correct. They do not keep their hours and give you an accounting at the end. It is a flat fee.
I, I just was concerned by estimated that it could go over. And then if it could, I'll buy how much, et cetera. But flat fee is fine. Thank you.
And Lisa, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong so far. So we've approved UMB so far at 7,500. We're approving essentially this at our minimums at 7,500, right? And that's the only two we've approved so far. Is that correct?
Of the 2025 budget, the additional costs will come at closing for both of them.
Okay, perfect. And Carolyn, when we, when they give these documents to us and there, are these available to the public? Do they stay with the town? How, how does that work for these bond documents?
God bless the member of the public who wants to read your bond documents.
I, I do. I like reading the bond documents.
Typically, we would not post the bond documents on a town website when they're in a draft form. When we get to approval by the council, you'll have the resolution will of course be in the packet. The actual draft bond documents would probably be available for council review, probably won't be in the packet due to the length of them. Some of the additional closing costs, closing documents are standard. I don't expect anyone to want to see them. They may be, is this going to be registered? There is a federal bond website called Emma. Yeah, actually, I don't think so. Never mind. Okay, so I think it would be just in the packet, at least the resolution and, you know, available as needed.
Questions? Right. There are motion to approve the resolution approving engagement of Butler Snow LLP to render an objective legal opinion with respect to the 2025 election and proposed lease purchase agreement and related certificates of participation.
So moved.
Sarah, second?
Second.
Discussion, councilmember Holt?
No, I think this is standard protocol. I, I agree with councilmember Jenkins having the flat fee. So, you know, we're not concerned of that going above. If there's additional work needed is great. And also having that safety net of the 7,500, if it doesn't work is, is definitely tolerable as well. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely be supporting it. I think we need to be following the correct process and getting the, the experts in here to help us with this process. So I did some research on Butler Snow. It sounds like they're reputable, very reputable. So I support this motion.
I'll be supporting it. I think the, the downside costs, if, if the measure doesn't pass, very reasonable for all the work that's going to take to get us to the point of getting it on a, on a ballot. So I'll be supporting it. And I think the top end is, is also reasonable, given the estimated size of the, the bond, et cetera. So thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to compliment everyone that's been involved with the rec center project so far. This is not a small lift. And, you know, our ability to consult with experts, contract with the right people, stay ahead of the process, keep the process moving forward. I've, I've just been really impressed. And I think this, this is another example of us bringing the, the right people in and at the right time. But I also appreciate, as councilmember Jenkins said, you know, if, if this measure isn't successful, we've minimized our, our exposure. So well, well done. Any other comments? All right, then all those in favor of the resolution engaging Butler Snow LLP signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed, nay? It once again carries unanimously. I believe we have run out of agenda items. So if there's no objection, we'll stand adjourned.